Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:03 PM. If we could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a little call, please?
Mrs. Gillar, here. Mr. Pascal.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Yeah.
Mrs. Dion, here. Mrs. Carey, here. Mr. Annaly.
Bill Dion, would you can?
Mr. Nolan.
Here. I'll turn this over to Ms. Peggy O'Shea.
Good evening, everyone. As always, submissions for public comments can be emailed to boecomments@cohog.org. So our pictures for this week, our schools showed their St. Patrick's Day spirit last week. And here you can see a group of Abram Lansing students gathered around the giant St. Patty's Day sign outside of their school. The second picture is Mrs. La Forest Middle School Technology Class. Students were busy designing and building most traffic-propelled cars. And then in the third picture, Mr. Perry and Rosie are pretty excited because Harmony Hall received $750 from the Stewart's Holiday Match Grant. All five of our schools received grants ranging from $750 to $800. So this was helpful because there was some information presented in our needs assessment that we were able to purchase through the grants, such as a science software program, OpenMax, at the middle school level readers, at the elementary school, in a screen, and a laptop for phys ed so they can project workouts and lessons. So Stacy is going to start us off in our budget presentation.
So first, I'd like to just highlight there's three different stimulus monies that have been circulated. The first is the CARES Act. So the CARES Act was actually accounted for as a revenue source in our current year budget, the 2021 year budget. There was an application process that the district did complete over the summer. The applications were all rejected, and we had to reapply in the fall to include private schools in the application process. There's really two different avenues for the CARES Act. There's the ESSR funding, which is $512,000, and then the GEAR, which is just over $71,000. The majority of the ESSR funding is staff, gear funding, some hardware. The total's just under $600,000. And to date, the application has not been finalized through the state, and we have not received any funding. So again, this is current year budget. Our fiscal year starts in July, and we are nearing the end of March, so approaching our 10th month of a 12-month fiscal year. Okay, can move on to the next. So the second federal aid package I refer to as CHRIS Act, and it's the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplementary Appropriations. So this was approved very late in December. And the budget impact here is for our proposed budget, so for the '21-'22 budget. Again, there will be an application process and allowable uses to be determined, but from what I understand, it's going to be similar to the ESSR money, and so we'll be able to use it for staffing. The allocation, according to the executive budget proposal, was 1.8 million. But as you know, in that executive proposal, there was a reduction in our aid. The foundation aid was frozen for a second consecutive year, and there were reductions in the expense-driven aid. So really, it was a, this is a shift from a state revenue source to a federal revenue source. It's not additional monies, if you will. The state budget is due April 1st, and so I'm hopeful, as is everyone else, that there will be some changes in that proposal, and hopefully we'll see some additional state aid in the final state budget. And then the third federal aid package is the newest that was approved in March. And the allocation and distribution will be determined by New York State. In the news, they're referring to this as shimmer money. The budget impact is likely a multi-year. So a portion in the proposed budget, a large portion in the '22-'23, and potentially into '23-'24. Again, there will be an application process, and allowable uses will be determined. There are some restrictions. There is a maintenance and equity requirement here, so we wouldn't be able to spend all the money in one building. We're going to have to make sure that we're being equitable in the distribution. And then also, there is a 20% minimum that'll be required to be spent on learning loss. And some examples would be summer school or some kind of extended day program. So there's several concerns regarding the federal aid. This is temporary funding, obviously. This can't go on forever. Again, there's the appearance of a shift from the monies being a state resource to a federal. And then the concern is, will the state be able to sustain that long term once the federal resource goes away? So that's the talk about the funding classes that you hear. Do you have any? There's a lot of gray, obviously, with the CHRIS and the ARP. So I apologize, but it remains gray. But at least we know that there is relief. And as a result, we're able to propose a budget and not have a budget gap for the proposal. So that is good news. But unfortunately, there is still a lot of gray.
So the concern there might be hypothetically with summer school, for instance, that we would have that for three years and then no longer be able to sustain it if the state wasn't able to pick up where the federal monies had left.
Right, right, that's a concern. Yeah, or we hired, just say, exome of staff.
Right, but that would be, if it wasn't like a stipend position, it would be a loss, a layoff, considering.
Right, so that's a concern, yeah.
Has there been any conversation about the initial funding that was meant to be coming through? But we haven't yet to see, like, as far as where we are in the process. I know that, you know, we're not the only district in this scenario. And I know that we have made cuts to improve our cash position just because that's what we've had to do while we're waiting. You know, it seems on the outside, like, schools are getting all this money all of a sudden, but we don't actually have any. You know, we have the promise of funds. We don't actually have anything in hand, and we don't have a timeline as to when it's coming. So I'm just wondering if there is any conversations in your groups where, you know, there is any kind of advocacy going on, or if there's a deadline, or, you know.
There is, there is a deadline approaching for the CARES Act. We need to finalize the application. It was actually this week, because there is a deadline. The state has to spend the money. It may or June, but there is a deadline fast approaching for the CARES Act, so the first initial fees. No talk as far as when the distribution or allocation will happen for the other two programs. So when they talk about the cash flow issues that we've experienced this year, there was multiple levels of factors, right, in the dilemma. So the first piece was the summer withholds. So that would have been money anticipated in 1920 that we didn't receive until January, mostly February of this year. So there's that extreme float period that we've murdered with. The second piece was the smart schools models. So we actually expensed that money in 2018 and in 2019. And again, floated that we received our first claim in, say, January, February. And that was from expenses from 2018. So we're still floating the camera piece, the claims, that's $386,000. There was also delays in our grant funding. So we're floating all those expenses. There was actually delays in food service that I didn't even talk about. But we received funding for September through December and January for food service. So that was quite a float. We have the CARES piece, and then we have the question about transportation, right? Because it's not clear if we are going to be aided on the expenses for contractual expenses that we heard during the closure period, so half of March, April, May, June. It doesn't appear that we're going to receive aid on those expenses, which would be considerable for us. So there's all of those factors, and the talk was really about only the 20% piece, but that was only a fraction of the impact on our cash flow. And then you have to talk about the three stimulus packages and schools receiving its money, but we haven't received any money for the stimulus fees today. But residents, right, are receiving her stimulus tax for each one of those tied in. And that's from the federal government directly. So we have, we have to wait for the state and the application process. So it is difficult to navigate through that, but we've, we've had to make the mid-year funds which were devastated. And we are persevering. It's been a painful year.
And where do we stand right now as far as, you know, we still have a couple months left to get through here. And without a timeline, I mean, that May-June deadline, you know, for that first round of funding is great, but that's $500,000?
Or? Yeah, a little bit over $500,000, less than $600,000.
Okay.
And that's stuff we've already planned out now. Like, that's around last year.
Yeah, but I mean, does that put us in a place where, you know, we're able to be making these decisions for next year if that money does come through in May-June?
So with the reductions that we've made this year, as you know, most of our stadium comes in this March, April timeframe. So we've received our excess cost data this month. We went to collect our taxes this month. So March is a, is a good month as far as cash flow. Next week, we should receive what they call a spring advance. So as far as cash position goes, everything is favorable. So the district treasurer and I will, and we've started to, we did freeze the budget for things like instructional materials and supplies, teacher Chromebooks, operation graduation, which I'll probably have a little bit later. Also, certain things that are, need attention immediately. We've opened up the resources to start that going. And they will evaluate the district treasurer and our cash position and make recommendations to the board in early June. We should have a favorable year, obviously, this year. I think just the actual cash didn't get here until basically the end of the year. So right, get it? So may, Boise Services. So we're going through just an overview of Boise Services. I mean, trying to categorize it in funnels that make sense. So from the, from the financial offices, we have the grant rating services, which basically pay for themselves. We've seen the future ready grant through the Boise Services. We've had several two-service equipment grants through these services. Stadium planning, as the Questar Stadium planning is an invaluable resource for us, keeps us up to date on all of the initiatives at the state level and our federal level. Envision software coordination, so that's our financial software. Actuary services, so this is for our OPEB liability. It's a requirement for anyone on it. And then the tax services, which we've done analysis of that. And again, that's an efficient process where Boise collects our taxes and then works with the district treasurer to reconcile. For facilities, we have the risk management services, which we began last year, which has been a favorable change for us. Very happy with the service. We do have our fire inspections with Boise's, as well as ML schedules, which is our work order system. We have the utilities. It's a shared service bid through for gas and electric. And then we have the voice-over IP telephone services as well.
So some of our other services, under human resources, our online application system, our recruiting, substitute coordination, some professional development, and then web posting and communications, which really fits under a number of categories. So we chose that one. Just so you know, human resources uses envisions as well, Stacy mentioned. So for technology, some of our system management, our network and server supports and backup and licensing, and then our copiers. And then on the instructional side, some services for our special education students, career and technical education, testing and scoring. We had done a cost analysis and provided it some years back when we did our internal scoring. And it was more cost-effective to go through this with Boise's, our science curriculum, Smithsonian Science, with Boise's, library coordination, and then some software and training. So any questions about our Boise Services? Okay, and then the next part is our central office needs assessment. And we struggled with this because the central office is really working with the entire district. So first of all, what we just have to do is give a huge thank you to the entire post-school district community for ensuring the health and safety of our students and our staff. There's been a few glimpses here in terms of having to move remotely for just certain periods of time, but we've managed, by and large, to keep our schools open since day one. And this would not have happened without everyone's efforts and their willingness to adapt. And we said this before, I think Mrs. Carey coined the phrase, but arrows abound throughout the Boise School District, going over, over and above. So just a, just a huge, a huge thank you. Challenges this year? And we've, we've been through them together. Stacy already mentioned persevering through the harsh impact of fiscal uncertainties. And it was a hard, a hard wrench in here in terms of making some decisions with budget. And, and of course, navigating the ever-changing challenges due to COVID, implementing new protocols and following new guidance. And that, that's changed, that's changed rapidly throughout the year. So, so that was, was another challenge. So in terms of our anticipated needs, I think one area, and this is a struggle here throughout, I think we have to be more strategic and continuously analyze and hands, and then monitor our systems of support district-wide to meet needs of students and families of staff, whether it's curriculum instruction and assessment or social-emotional, human resources, or budgetary. So, you know, to do the review, implement, and then just continuously monitor. And so, so that's, that's one of, one of our needs this year as we're looking at each, each piece of district-wide and starting to, to follow this process. And then also, I'm feeling a bit concerned. So Stacy?
So the proposed '21-'22 budget is $43,597,033. It's a decrease of 0.62% over the current year budget. The change is a negative $270,033. This, this could change when the state budget is finalized, but this is based off of what we know as far as revenues right now. So this is just a reminder, and there are two items that were changed on a preliminary revenue summary. So we've talked about this a couple of times. The change that was made was federal aid was increased, assuming that we use $880,000 of the ARP, the new, the third stimulus program. And then also, the inter-fund revenue number was increased. That is for use of our EBLR reserve. We have several retirements this year. I was able to run the estimates for each retirement. And so that's the, what we expect to pay out. So on the expense side, it was reflected. And so it's reflected here on the revenue side as well. So no other, no other changes. And again, we'll talk about this in more detail once the state budget is passed and everything is finalized. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. So proposed expenses.
If only we could have a 719% increase in federal funding every year.
Let me reduce the number of meetings we have.
So you'll see, we have the increase in instruction. And so we'll talk about the details as we go through each building and the departments. So there's some added positions that are being proposed. Employee benefits, really, we had, this is what we expect, we had, I think, some retirees that passed away, which contribute to savings. And then we don't have, we had zero for Blue Shield and actually a reduction for ESI. So that's why that is a negative. Operations and maintenance, we had several retirements and some resignations this year, which in turn causes natural breakage. So that's a piece of the negative there. We also reduced equipment, and we reduced building repairs. We are working towards a capital project, so we're hoping that we can spend the repairs through the capital project and save next year. Transportation, there are no field trips in the proposed budget. Again, transportation contracts are based off of the May CPI. So this is according to trend. And then debt service is based off of existing schedules for bond payments, principal, and interest.
So I just want to go over some budget highlights. But before I do, just a reminder to everyone of our process. We started with needs assessments at the building levels with our building leadership teams and our teacher leaders. We then, as a budget committee, met with administrators. I want to thank again Mr. Nolan, Mr. Jackson, and Mrs. Carey for serving on the budget committee. I think maybe there are a few more meetings than we thought when you signed up, but we thank you for persevering. We had a return on investments, which that was a new process this year for things that weren't required. And then each of our principals and special programs, technology, have already done a presentation. So in terms of the proposed budget, looking at the post-high school, we have the needs assessment on one side, and then what's in the budget. And I will then talk about some of the other areas. So the return of the EMA Academy. This is 0.6 English teacher, 0.6 Math teacher, 0.6 Social Studies teacher, and 0.5 Science teacher. 0.4 FTE school counselor to bring to 1.0. Our transitions at a 1.0 level, after-school assistance program, that's the three-to-five program. It's typically used to assist juniors and seniors. But in talking with Mrs. Charlo, we're going to, the high schools exploring how to expand this to meet some additional needs. Summer school, summer school is needed. There are some other things that were mentioned, and it was loud and clear at the meetings that a special education teacher leader is very important. We'll be exploring grant opportunities for this, whether through our school improvement grant, which is how we fund our other teacher leaders, where we believe this year will, will have, be able to potentially do that through our IDEA grants. Implementing SEL, social-emotional learning, into the classroom and mentoring was seen as a need. Title IV is another grant that funds can be used in this area. So two other items that were in the needs assessment but are not in the proposed budget. Full-time social worker. The high school does have one social worker. This would have been a second social worker. And then also, a special, special education teacher. Any questions about this?
Is, are any of these funds through the federal funds that are temporary? Is it, you know, it's almost like the federal funds are like, almost like a grant. Should we, is it worthwhile to break down, you know, in the future, which ones are, we don't have a permanent revenue, you know, source for? Does that make sense? I don't know, if any of these are allocated that way, like, summer school is on the premises, could be, because that's one of the areas that the federal funds could be used on.
Yes, so. In the budget, the 1.8, the full allocation is a revenue source. And then the newest, the ARP, $880,000 was assumed. There's been estimates. I don't know what the allocation is going to be, but I'm very confident that $880,000, there will be funds available for the next year now and possibly even an additional year out. We have not identified by those programs yet because we don't know the use, the.
The requirements.
Right. So we're not quite there yet. We can guesstimate, and we might have to make some changes if it's not appropriate use, but we could certainly, we could certainly do that.
I think it'll just be helpful moving forward to your, to your, if we're down, you know, if summer school, for instance, is on the federal program, then we need to find a, and we find it very valuable, which is fair enough, then we'll need to find a, you know, a revenue source for it.
Sure.
So I'm looking at the 20% learning loss. You know, a number, a number of these things could fit in. And we are, you know, outside of the summer and the extended learning. We don't have direction yet, other than it needs to be research-based. So we need to see what, what definition, you know, what will fall into that, that category. But we're mindful as we do this, that we can, in this last year.
That makes sense, thank you.
So at the middle school, also, the 0.6 FTE school counselor to bring to the 1.0, the specialized tier-three reading teacher. This, as presented, enables a number of students with disabilities and the need of active intervention to, to receive the services. Special class math at a 0.2 FTE, and then the behavior support teacher at 0.2 FTE. And then the same thing with the special education teacher leader to explore the grant opportunities. So the full-time teacher assistant is not in the proposed budget. With anything that is not in the proposed budget, we went back to the administrators. With anything that is not in the proposed budget, we went back to the administrators and have a discussion, and then if it was on special education, we did that in conjunction with, with the Aaron Hill. So, so this was a collaborative decision in terms of, we understand that they are all, all needs, and we would have liked to move them all over to the proposed budget. And but we did have to make some decisions and utilizing as a committee as well, the return on investment process helped us in this period. So at the elementary level. So Abram Lansing, you heard Cliff talk about piloting a new model. So this is two special education teachers. And this is difficult because we're going from a zero-based budget, which means we typically reflect on last year's budget. But at the elementary level, if you looked at the proposed budget versus previous years, it's, it's, it would have, in our old terminology, it's a shift in resources. So. You know. So in terms of Harmony Hill and Vansky, academic intervention service providers. You might recall that this year we had to utilize the existing staff in terms of either virtual teachers or additional sections. Music teacher at the elementary in the, in a face-to-face model, we would have to move the existing elementary music teacher back to middle and high school. So math and science curriculum resources, so curriculum resources and PT, et cetera, are also in the other, the high school and middle school budgets as well. However, this was definitely in all three elementary school needs assessments, which is why we wanted to show that here. Technology. So the full-time psychologist, Abram Lansing and Vansky, I know there has been discussion and a request for that for the past couple of years, but at this time, that, that is not in, in the proposed budget. Each of our buildings does have a full-time, full-time social worker. And then in terms of the other departments.
So facilities, there's several vacancies in the current, so in the proposed budget, but all of the five vacancies are said to have been filled, we're working on those right now. So we suspect we'll have them filled by the close of this year, at least we're hopeful. So rest assured, they're included in the proposed budget. For the equipment asks, though, were adjusted downward, and he's been encouraged to spend his allocated equipment money this year, providing health and safety needs. It's the first priority. For technology, the hard, the ask for hardware and software. So in the proposed budget, hardware is limited to the stated ceiling. And the plan is to use smart, smart schools bond money as an alternative resource. We are in the current year purchasing party BP pro books for our teachers, for the high school and the middle school, using current year resources. And then the plan will be to purchase for the elementary staff next year in the proposed budget. Because the the pro books that staff have currently are not end-of-life for another year and a half or so. They will be repurposed to students within the district. Actually, particular clubs and athletic programs have been a demonstrated need for the whole student. And so those clubs are being offered, some clubs are a part of it, but in the proposed budget, there are some exclusions, and the athletic programs would be offered at the current, at the current level. So you'll have reductions as far as athletic programs.
If I recall, regarding athletics, there were a program or two, I think, where we've had numbers low for a couple of years, and we were talking about, you know, working with other districts or, you know, even looking at other sports potentially that might draw a larger population, is that still in the works, or is that not something?
Yes. We'll continue to work on those efficiencies, yes, there was a few programs that the numbers were low, so. Actually, we received some documentation, and it was helpful on kind of getting started, and the conversations. We'll begin, we'll take a look at how we make it back.
Thank you.
So before we go on to the presentation schedule, any, any questions about the items that we just discussed in the proposed budget?
So with respect to summer school, can, can I assume that no one is expecting summer school? So it's, it's a, it's a given that summer school is not, is not guaranteed? Is that, is that an assumption, or is the assumption business as usual with respect to summer school?
So we, we will need summer school this year.
So it's, the, the plan is some, summer school will be offered, but we're not sure a lot of funding for that, you know, funding is great, but too great extent.
So let me talk about summer school a little bit too. So I mean, you've been hearing some discussions about regions and not, regions not being offered in certain areas. So if for a student to get an exemption in future years from that region, they have to pass the course. So, so for example, this year, there's not global studies regions. If a student doesn't pass the course, they don't qualify for the region's exemption in future years. So that's why the summer global studies, for example, it's, it's crucial to have summer school for global studies. So that is our students are juniors, they won't have to take global studies and pass the regions while also taking US history and passing, passing the regions. So, so there's some regions requirements that may, may be beneficial for us to have summer school. And then also, if we don't have summer school, then instead of, you know, paying during the summer programming, we'd have to look at sections next school year, so it's a
There'll be no regions, because there's two.
There is no regions in this June or this August, so if students pass in summer school, then they are exempt from it.
So we're so fortunate to have life monkey here. So what, what percentage of students in your career diligently worked throughout the year and failed the course?
Diligently worked throughout the year and failed.
Next to nothing, would you say?
Oh, yeah, I could say probably zero.
So I'm just curious about summer schools for students that don't learn to do much all year, and they can all, they can wait weeks and, and everybody can start. I, I believe that summer school for students that need summer school, for, for students where that, that gap will hurt them, students possibly in speech therapy, students, some of our students with special needs, that, that, that summer gaps really sets them back. I'm not as excited about summer schools for students that just don't bother to go out and study.
But that, well, firstly, I don't think that is going to ever change, whether we're in a pandemic or not.
I don't think it'll change with respect to students. So I don't, I don't feel change in that.
No, I just think you'll always have those students.
But during these days, our financial times, what is our, what is, what is our financial? That's just.
Just to clarify, summer school would be full in person every day?
Summer school would be in person. I think it's Monday through Thursday is typically how, how we, we do it. And then this year, I would say, because of, you know, different times, the high school having to move to remote because of some technology, because of having hybrid learning models. This is, this is a unique, this is a unique year, and so I, I believe it's, it's important.
I just think at some point, it's worth just looking at summer school. What, what did you decide is, is, what, what is our belief about summer school? And for whom should, should, should dollars be spent on, on summer school? And possibly for whom they, they need to just repeat, repeat the school year? And I used, I used to hear from students back in my counseling days, they would plan on summer school, and it's not a bad deal. They could, they could do very little in a whole year, and just in a few weeks in summer. They go, so they would just plan on that, and I, and I, I don't know, I don't know. So I think that somebody's summer school would be almost paraplegic, they would have success. But I do think there's students that, that they needed education, they needed. There has been some discussion.
I think most years, I would agree with you, this year, I think with the difficulties mentioned, you have a lot of kids who have passed every class their entire life, were having issues.
Yes, so it's a different population that works.
So it's a very different.
I think this year.
Next year too, right?
So the one thing I would, I would ask now, though, is can we start surveying these kids to understand what sort of summer school setup would work best that we can get people to, because obviously, that's always the trade-off, is kids really don't want to get off their summer. But it's, you know, how can we structure it so that they are likely to come every day and actually show?
And so we, we started the discussion, so with Tom Kostrowski and Laura Charlo, and also we're excited that we have some administrative interns who will be helping this year, I mentioned Mr. Sandra Cantaloupe. And Erin, we don't know this yet, but we also talked about, you know, communicating a little differently to students about summer school as well. So I see a video on your horizon that you don't know about, but so we, we have, we have started the discussions tonight.
I also just want to add that there are those students who need, need that summer school, not this year, but in the past, for social emotional reasons. It is, it is a safe haven to go and
I don't go to school, the elimination of summer school, I think there's students that need it.
But there are some who need it for more than just, they didn't do anything all year, you know what I mean? There are other reasons that these, some of these students need that.
But as a teacher, you know, who's who.
Correct. But you can't pick and choose who goes. And leave them, they have, and they qualify for summer school, you don't want to say if they downed your course.
So I started the discussion for a while.
I like raising, I'm very thoughtful, listen.
Other questions?
Can I just say something about the process? Yes. We were using, you know, terms like zero base, and it's, it's all very formal and impressive. But basically, we dismantled the entire budget, right? And then we looked to see what was required by law, and then we looked at so many other sources to see what we needed. And I think I can speak for the gentleman again, sorry. We framed everything that we put back in, in terms of what was good for the kids, right? And just because we weren't able to put something in, we were sort of moking out a number of years and hoping to build back things. We had planned deficits for a number of years, which is sort of how we got into the mess that we're in. Trying to get out of that mess, still offer what the kids need, still, you know, be supportive community for one another. And it was, it was a difficult, difficult process. But we're, we're trying to be forward-looking and, and still give as much support as we can to everybody. But thank you so much to Ms. Matt and Ms. O'Shea, because it was a very difficult process.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing for me is that we finally made it to a year where we're expecting zero general fund balance to be spent. Which clearly was never sustainable. Got pretty darn lost at the end of the road.
So I just would, I kind of had a question, so I'm gonna, because this is perfect entryway to that. I guess, you know, seeing all these proposed budget, like additions from reductions that we've made, kind of, you know, not having intimate knowledge of the process, and I, you know, and we do appreciate all the work with them, three of you, but I know that it was a ton and enormous, enormous task that was put in front of you. It, it makes me a little nervous to see all, all of these additions into the proposed budget without seeing really what the reductions are, or where the reductions are, or how we got to a point where we're proposing a budget that's less than it was last year. Positions that we cut this year, and we still have to save twenty percent on, and then trying to think forward to not have a multi-year deficit over, because we were potentially looking at, you know, twenty twenty four before we could break the ship. Now, I do understand some of this, you know, state and federal funding, it is helpful for us, but it also leads us to a position where none of us, you know, could, we don't want to be where we were this year, having to make the really hard choices and, you know, putting some very valuable staff and programs that we have. So I guess, without having intimate knowledge of how that process worked, I see a lot here. I'm just, you know, it, it, it gives me a little bit of anxiety to think about, okay, well, where is this coming from? You know, how are we spending less, getting more, and not losing anything? So.
So if I could start with the elementary level, we just give an, an example. So because it's zero-based, and you, and you see what's there based on the presentations, that doesn't mean that those positions are on top of what was in the budget, the elementary that was started this year. Sense? So it's not, no, I for example, Abram Lansing staffing is the same, it's a shifting of resources. But what we did differently this year is we didn't say, oh, here is the last year's budget, let's roll it over. What we did is look at each of those pieces and determine the need and your return on investment. So for example, on those two special education positions to ensure and justify putting them in, in the budget. Okay, so that's one, that's one piece of it.
I think it's also important to note that we made reductions this year, and the majority of the proposed positions are things from those reductions coming back.
I, I understand that, I can see that.
But I don't.
But we also.
We changed this year's budget for those reductions that we made mid-year. So that was last year's supreme budget, when we ended up knocking that budget down significantly.
Yeah, no, I totally get that, I totally get that. I'm just saying, you know, we were in a position this year to have to make very difficult decisions to pack because we didn't have cash flow to get through to next year. Reinstating or shifting our resources to include people or things that were taken away. Still, at the end of the day, next year, does that put us in a better cash position than we're at now? And are we putting, you know, allowing ourselves the flexibility to be able to improve it?
So the federal stimulus money is, okay, in the current year, we haven't seen anything.
Yeah.
It's going to be months, ten, that can't happen next year. It can't happen, because it's
Too much.
Too much money. So that can't happen, and there's really no excuse for the state to, to veto late on that, because so I can't make you, I can't promise you what I have absolutely no control over. So there's one point eight in the first, that Karen said, and there's another eight hundred and eighty thousand in the ARP, that was assumed in this budget. They can't wait until April to make good on that, it's way too much money. So is that a gamble? I, I hope not. But I can't guarantee that. So there was three categories, there was category one, which everything was included, category one, were there adjustments? Yes. Adjustments were made in hardware. So the hardware was adjusted downward in IT to be only what is aidable, what will be back in aid, because we saw movement in the smart schools money, so I didn't talk about that. So that is an example of an adjustment. Because we saw movement in the smart schools money. So I didn't talk about that. So that is an example of an adjustment. Initial textbook um projections at the elementary were too high because. They had forecasted based on prior year, which included a three-year installment payment textbook. So. Wasn't acceptable in the new year. So that was adjusted downward. Materials and supplies were adjusted downward because we had a spending freeze this year and we're in the position now where we can, we can purchase materials and supplies.
Which is great. I I'm just saying, you know, when we're talking about, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three. You know, we want to be in a good place and making sure that. And I know that you guys are all very thoughtful about the stuff that you bring back or were proposing to include within this next budget. But I, it just seems like. It seems like a lot and I just, you know. Guess shame on me for not having um the experience that you guys had. So I I just don't know where that comes from and. It makes me nervous to feel like, uh, you know. We could be in another spot. We didn't have any control over our current state funding delays. We're not going to have any control over when we get any relief aid. Um. So.
So the.
I guess.
I think the positive movement that we're seeing is next year, we won't be uh planning to. Use any fund balance, right? So that's a positive change compared to your last year.
But how much of this is on the the hopes and needs of this money coming in?
One point eight.
One point eight and then another five. So.
So I, I, Margaret, I, I understand your argument and especially knowing you and you're. You're that person and things that I'm, I'm not saying like wanting, but I understand. Um, and and we're living with such uncertainty. And we just are and no, no one knows and no one knows and no one can be comfortable. Uh, and that's just, I think that's just where I think what they did was proper. But but we're all going to be nervous about it. I understand.
Yeah.
Understand that. But at the same time, I think what what they did is the right thing to do, but journalists, none of us can, journalists can change. Bad things just don't happen, you know?
Right. A lot of the things that we we are, you know, proposing to put back in. Um, we knew that would be, you know, they would be allowable under the federal funds, right? The summer school. That we we anticipate that that's going to give us two years, the mentoring or the tutoring, two years. So which gives buys us a little more time to see where we are with the other things that we put back in and make sure that that's sustainable. Forward. You know what I mean? So there are pieces that are maybe not permanent or, you know, permanent on the scale that we're going to implement them for next year because of the federal stimulus money. That we know we need that for. So.
So it was also, I mean, it was a very, as maybe said, it was a very intense process looking through everything. And if. There was, there was a whole column, you know, threes that we couldn't even look at. We knew that. So this is, this is not. Um, this is, this is a no brims budget.
I get that. I, and and honestly, I'm not. You know, trying to cut down the work that you did or say that that there's not value in the proposals because that's absolutely, that's not what I'm trying to do. I guess from my perspective, it's, I don't see what number three was. I don't, I I have no idea what number three was. So or even anybody in the community or any of our staff to know. What's going to be different next year to make these things happen? And these things are very important and this is where our priorities are and that's where our priorities lie. But what what's not, what are we going to see that's different so that these things can happen? Just less supplies, less textbooks and. You know, I I just think that that it's hard to do a presentation to look at. The things that we're proposing to have included in the budget without including the things that were not including in the budget, which may have been historically a part. And maybe inappropriately a part of our budget as you all determined.
So basically just a slide of this is what's was there, it's not.
Right. I mean, you look at it and you're like, okay, you've been complaining about having no money all year long. You're going to bring back, you know, programs, which again are much needed programs. But, you know, a layperson who's out here who actually has to vote for this budget is like, well, why do they have all the money all of a sudden? You know, I I I think that it's just, there's value in us having transparency to say. In this process, things such as blah, 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 fell into three.
Like three trips or things, you know, things that we just flat out couldn't include the arts and the field trips.
I just think it's important for people to understand what how they're going to see see change, you know, because of.
How life is going to be different.
And and it needs to be.
Yeah.
Um. But I think we need to communicate that too and figure out what that means. For anybody on the outside. I think we can, we can, we can propose a budget budget all day long, but it has to, you know, go through a voting process.
But I think people do it. Everyone knows there's been federal assistance. Everyone knows that now. But of course, we don't know sustainability, what what will be in the future, but there there is help is, we did receive.
Sure.
People know that.
I think, I think the decisions that were made are not above and beyond like, oh, I just got my stimulus and I'm going to go out and buy a TV like. It's quite obvious that we didn't make those decisions. But there's exactly, there's restorations, but there's also, you know, we have to show a balance too. Um.
No, I think those, those are great points. We didn't, you know, this doesn't bring back everything that was cut here this year. And so making that part clear of like, these are the things that are still not going to be here next year is important.
So Stacey, that was like the next slide of the schedule. And we can, or, you know, we can present more information beyond what we do today at the next deliberation meeting.
Yeah.
Well, at the additional slide, it's over the, what were the threes? We do have another slide showing. Oh, we just put everything together that was, you know, not included, but in the needs assessment. So.
Then we also had like the individual category reductions and just put that there as well because that obviously happened after.
I mean, I'm not talking about like maybe pretty like.
No, maybe it's some individual.
In terms of like program or how is, how is school going to look different next year? Because of the shift of resources. Okay, we've got, you know, we're shifting resources. Okay, that means money's going here from where? You know, I I guess that's kind of.
And just for people to see, the voters to see. It looks like they brought everything back, but once they see the list of what's not going to be here next year, that's the real reality of it.
Well, I mean, and we are in that reality. So we are.
What I'm agreeing with.
I mean, and and you guys have been very thoughtful about this and I appreciate the fact that. We have a budget that is less next year than what 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 currently plus approved for this year. I I appreciate that, you know, um. I just. And, you know, a lot of thought was, and I'm not taking away from any of your work. It's just, uh, I think that we need to have a perspective of. You know, showing uh the process a little. In 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 just a way that shows where some of those reductions were.
So there's.
Or shifts.
There's. Two factors. So I always make clarification. So I make sure that I gave you the information that you're looking for. So the first. Factor would be items that were proposed, but proposed to us through the needs assessment process, but not included in the proposed budget factor one. But then there were mid-year reductions this year that weren't brought to us. Do you want to see both of those things or just the items that were brought up as a need and not brought forward?
I mean, we've seen, we've seen the needs assessments from from the buildings and, you know. Being here and participating in this process, I know what those things are. And. It it's just like, where did we get? I go back to your category three, you know, what what what's what's the category three that has just pushed us up?
Okay.
I mean, we've all, anybody can go back and look at our our needs assessments through budget presentations. It's just. The things that through the zero-based process, we have deemed as. Not a value uh for return on investment, not important to our vision and mission, you know, things, things. Like that. And if that means it's textbooks and furniture and doing things. You know, providing our money for things that are good for kids, that's great. It's just, you know, you see it and you're just like, okay, well, where did it all come from? Where did the, where did the resources get shifted from?
Yeah, I think a perfect example is the like I T expenditure. Like we were planning, we had planned to spend more money in I T, but we're going to shift some of that to the smart school fund.
Right.
Because we've seen some money come through that and we have faith in it.
Yeah.
So that's an example where we're reducing our expense for that one specifically. So things like that.
So we'll do two things. I mean, we'll do definitely here, having thirty threes. And then also as part of this process. We went back into the original and reduced sections too. So those are two different things.
And I appreciate efficiency. Oh, I'm sorry. Um. This is just a reminder, our presentation schedule. So tonight we talked about. Um. Uh, just to update, uh, highlight really for the boosty services and we talked about central office. And then tonight, we're supposed to talk and get the conversation started about budget deliberations. Um, and then April fourteenth is dedicated uh to budget deliberations and then April twenty-first. Um, is actually the board taking action for the budget. The deadline for that is April twenty-third. So depending on when the state finalizes our budget, we might want to throw or we didn't within here, but right now. Um, so that's obviously open for discussion. And then I just wanted to talk about some of the deadlines. So again, the twenty-third is the deadline for for an action to approve the budget and the property tax report card. And then our budget hearing is scheduled for May fifth. And then the statewide vote is May eighteen. And then we did come up with a list of some items for potential conversation. Um, for deliberations and this was based off of, um, for the high school, middle school and elementary. Um, items that were gray, so items that were brought forward uh through the needs assessment process, but were included in the proposed budget. And then, uh, we had mountain teacher leaders, our um. Principals uh yesterday and today. And so some items were flat out as we shared uh the proposed budget. Summary with some additional items were brought up. So we we included those in that list here. Uh, so that would be additional summer school support. Actually, our middle school teachers that have brought that up. Uh, for some of the eighth graders that are struggling and thinking, uh, maybe have some attention. Um, as incoming ninth graders. Um, additional hours for guidance in the summer based off of the current environment. Uh, professional development and lack of our the past several years. Systems and supports and H R. And uh instructional materials and supplies and equipment. So those are uh some of the items that you're talking about that were adjusted downwards.
So any other questions for? No one?
I know we do, uh, we did have a creative question coming that's related to you. But it's not a page, but then also a couple of other things. So if it makes sense, I'll jump to that now. And I'll read it first. It's a little bit like the end of the bunch to it, but then I'll come back to the specific questions. For me, so the. Questions are from Mary Ann DeRan and thank you for sharing these. I appreciate them. I think they're great questions. And it reads as my questions for the board of education tonight. One, many cuts were made this year in anticipation of a twenty percent cut in funding from New York State. My understanding is that we have received all the money without the twenty percent cut. A, have we reinstated the staff that were let go? B, have we reinstated programs that were placed on hold? C, what have we done to undo the damage when we anticipated the cut funding now that we have all the money we were intended to have? Two, the CDC is recommending to decrease the social distance from six feet to three feet to allow more kids at school. A, when will our kids return to full school, full-time school? B, there are kids failing this hybrid system and they need to be back at school full-time. They should not wait until the fall. This needs to happen soon. And my final statement for tonight is that we need to find a way to honor the teachers and staff that go above and beyond for our students to help them through this. My son has struggled since school let out one year ago. My son, who has always been on the higher role or highest center role, has been failing terribly. While having a discussion about my daughter with one of her teachers, I mentioned that I wish my son had a teacher like her. Who could help him figure this out. The teacher has taken him under her wing. She spoke to all of his teachers to determine where the weakness lies and they all said it is not ability. It is his home days that the work is lacking on. She spoke with him and set up a plan. She now meets with him during study halls and on home days. She does a Zoom meet to keep him on track. This has been going on for four weeks and he is turning things around. He went from failing every class to failing only one or two and he is working hard to improve those areas as well. She is not one of his teachers. She did not know him until we talked. She is just someone who saw there was a need and stepped up and for that I will be forever grateful. Our schools need more teachers like Miss Brock. So uh, thank you again for sharing that. I'll jump back to the top questions. Um, so specifically. Many cuts were made this year in anticipation of a twenty percent cut funding from New York State. My understanding that that we received all the money without the twenty percent. Is is that accurate, Stacy? Uh, right, I guess to a point, we we haven't quite received all the money yet, but to your point, we were going to, we'd get most of the money in. March and April.
So this, this goes back to the the four factors in the cash flow problem. So the twenty percent withhold were, that was only one portion of the problem, right? There was another twenty percent withhold in the summer of nineteen twenty revenue that was withheld until January and February. Twenty twenty months. Okay, so that's one piece of the of the factor. Then we had the smart school money that we had been floating. It was over half a million dollars. That was twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. We received the first claim in February. It was a hundred and thirty-two thousand, nothing more than five hundred thousand. So that was the second factor. Third factor is unsettled. Um, revenue is good for the current year. So that would be the care of right. The almost six hundred thousand and then the question related to transportation needed, which. We don't have a number for that yet. And then there was the delayed revenue. So that was the federal grants were delayed. And food service monies were delayed. So multimillion dollars in delays. So we have received as of February. Uh, the twenty percent withhold. We haven't received, we're not full. Um, there's, there's several pieces that are are. Unsettled. So smart schools is still unsettled. Parents Act is still unsettled and then we transportation aid. We're not sure.
So we answered some of the other questions. Have we reinstated uh the staff that we let go? We have done some partial reinstatement. Uh, at the high school and the middle school. Um, but what we've been doing is also beginning to implement programming that will. Meet students' needs now that we have received that payment. So for example, Stacy mentioned the operation. Graduation earlier. So we have um a group of seniors who are coming in on their. Um, at home learning day and um receiving some better recovery and additional assistance. Uh, Laura Tarlo. And I and the teacher leaders are also talking about um after-school programming in person. We noticed. Students are in person uh were expressed um to receive some additional help for students in in other grades. So. Um, and then in terms of bringing the programs back that were placed on hold, we have begun to um. Purchase some materials and supplies and and work um for some of those programs. But it's more about shifting um resources right now to to meet the immediate needs of the students, such as with operation graduation.
And some with uh agreements and a lot of amazing volunteers through like athletics and clubs. We've been able to reinstate some of those programs. Before even, you know, the financial situation was addressed. Before even, you know, the financial situation was addressed.
Yeah. And just to, uh, because connections are key. And so those, those clubs and. So in terms of the CDC, um, the CDC recommendation has been to reduce, uh, from six feet to three feet. So a few things. First of all, those have not been adopted by New York State Department of Health. So that's, that's the first thing. So, uh, we need to await guidance from New York State Department of Health. Um, but there's also some intricacies in those recommendations. So, um, while the elementary can go back to three feet. Whether we're in a low, moderate or a high area of transmission. Um, the guidance says that the middle and high school students can only go, uh, to three feet. If we're in a low or moderate zone. And right now Albany County and, and many of the surrounding counties, if not most. Are considered in a high transmission zone. So even under CDC guidance right now, if we are did adopt. We could not move to three feet yet at the, as a middle and high school. But so we are aware, the administrators have been pouring through the recommendations. We've started planning discussions. Um, but that's not something that we can move to.
And as things are progressing, if we were able to do anything, we prioritize at least trying to bring the seniors back in on an everyday basis. And obviously anything beyond that is great, but give them what little semblance of, we'll start to see they can add to that.
Yeah, we would, we would prioritize and, um, and again, um, we had conversations with both, both Laura and Dan. Um, at the elementary, the only, uh, issue is lunch. Lunch has to stay six feet anytime a student doesn't have a mask on. Um, so, um, but we, we would be able to creatively.
Reasonably at the elementary levels, everyone is wearing a mask to.
They're, they're every day. The only, our, our change of instructional model preference form closes Thursday. So I'll, I'll have some updates after that. But you're right, right now, uh, elementary is in-person. Many of them are found in homes. Um, this would help, uh, two, um, at the middle school right now in terms of the change of instructional preference. Um, more and more we want more and more students, uh, coming back to us. So, uh, it would be the three feet in some cases would be helpful.
In the meantime, is there an appeal process for kids who are, um, struggling severely to be able to appeal to be an everyday learner? Do we have space available? Is this something that you've had conversations with administrative team about? Uh, the potential of just bringing back like our most extreme cases of kiddos who are really struggling at home?
So in terms of the secondary model.
Secondary.
Right now there, I mean, so for example, we are able to do it. We're doing that at the high school level. And we are having conversations in terms of, I mean, at the twelfth grade level, some conversations in terms of nine and eleven. Uh, it's, it's, and it's a scheduling difficulty with our hybrid, hybrid model. Uh, but what we are looking at is other ways to provide additional support on the, on the person days, like we're doing with the operation, we're enjoying. We'll continue this discussion.
But that's for middle and high school?
High school.
Just high school.
See, and that's, that's my thing. You know, like a sixth grader, uh, who. Has accommodations and is home alone. And needs to be managed. You know what I'm saying? Too. I mean, these kids are struggling and these parents are struggling terribly. These kids are alone all day and they're not doing the work. If they're, you know, ADHD or whatever the situation, they're not doing the work. They have nobody to help them, nobody to monitor them.
So that's why continuing to look at the, the three feet and the background has changed. The difficulty right now is if you. With the six feet, if you have this many students on one day and then if you only accommodate as many students in person on. On the next day. So that's, that's the difficulty right now without being able to, to move within sort of the three feet range. But I hear what you're asking in terms of are there ways to accommodate, um, others? And we can have that discussion with Dan as well.
Okay, thank you.
And one last thing I did want to jump back to as part of the question was as far as like undoing damage that has happened during this time. That is part of the point of the stimulus funds that we will be able to provide these short-term boosts. And whether it's summer school or other activities or, you know, mental health counseling, whatever they are, that will help. Bring people back to semblance of where they were before.
And in terms of even, even things like staying after, staying after school for additional assistance, um, you know, that's, that's starting to, to happen now. I mean, stages, we need to keep Google Docs and, and monitor. But for a while, that was something that because of the rates wasn't, wasn't. So we understand in person.
So the example, that, that middle school student, just as an example. Do the, would the parents know, was they informed that we, we now have additional help after school for the in-person days? Or is the school sending that information out?
Just we're in the planning stages.
And is that how that would work though?
And we would share.
Was there any board discussion, uh, any agenda items at all, pre-ification agenda items? In that case, I can use a motion to set tonight's consent.
I'll make a motion.
Mrs. Gillar?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deon?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Anally?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Dolan.
Yes.
He didn't even have you with us.
Thank you for joining us, what you can be. Appreciate the, the work that you do. I did want to, I know it was already discussed, uh, we're in a portion of the agenda where. We've talked about anything unrelated to the agenda. And I did just want to thank. A, everyone that was involved in the, the budget process from the bottom to the top. So staff members in all the buildings, the building leadership teams, the principals. To, uh, the folks on the committee, to our leadership team that, you know, I, I really appreciate the. The budget is a utility process and it's very large, especially for, and for any district really. And the amount of time and effort that I think we, we put into it this year was, was needed. And I think it will put us on the right foot forward. Hopefully we'll move forward. So I just want to say a special thank you to everyone involved with that. And so I'm going to take a moment to, to thank Mark. I had a, a nice call with Mark and Aaron today. Looking forward to the, some information about, I'm sharing about the purpose and a plan approach that we're doing moving forward. And also just to thank Mark for, he was coming out of a, a meeting with the housing authority. Uh, he's always looking out for residents of the house. And I, I really appreciate, you know, all the times over many, many years where he's always advocating for our students and, but not only just our students, but everyone in the house. So thank you, Mark, for that.
Thank you.
And the meeting would do with a whole lot more funding.
Any other comments or discussion from board members?
Congratulations to that BoShark to share out for getting center.
Always important for our friends.
And it can't be said enough. I want to appreciate and I'm, I'm enjoying the good. People that are literally working for nothing, coming in. Day in, day out, keeping our athletics going, keeping our clubs going. And for so many of our students that it's, uh, nothing more important than. Always being in there to, to our heroes.
In that case, our, our next meeting is April fourteenth, uh, six o'clock. And, uh. I'll ask for a motion for the board to enter into executive session at seven twenty-three PM. To discuss matters linked to employment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person.
I like motion.
Second. Mrs. Gillar?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Do we have to do all those things now?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deon?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yeah.
Mr. Anally?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Nolan?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Um, we don't expect to return to public session. Have a good evening.